Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council to order Tuesday, April 21st, 2015. Councilor Tran, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
Let your ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
President Hay.
Here.
Councilor Bean.
Present.
Councilor Boishman.
Present.
Councilor Beazall.
Present.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor De Natale.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Joseph.
Here.
Councilor Caddy.
Here.
Councilor Kuschmerich.
Here.
Councilor Tran.
Here.
We'll now have the public forum. Anybody wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing a public hearing petition, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach your Senate table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Mr. Casassa. Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. Respectfully, Larry Casassa, Acting Director of Community Development, also resident of Tapanos Drive in Pittsburgh, respectfully request the council consider taking Order Number 080-15 under suspension of the rules this evening. The reason for that request is that it's a time-sensitive request. The city has already put that property, that demolition, out to bid and must award a contract within 30 days of the bid open, which would, that period would lapse if this request were to be sent to committee and then returned to council in two weeks.
Motion to suspend the rules on 8015.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion, second, for suspension of the rules on 8015. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is before you.
Motion to approve 8015.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to adopt 00815. Speaking to the motion, Councilor De Natale.
Thank you. I'm going to oppose this tonight because the very last place we should be taking this money out of is other post-employment benefits. We have nothing funded against this account. It's $200 million and counting. We are in such a bad position with our pension and health care plan, I mean, our health care plans. I mean, because it hasn't hit us yet, like everywhere else, we just keep kicking it down the road. We have no conceivable plan now or in the future to address that account. And now we're going to raid it because we decided not to do something five, six, seven years ago when it was a lot less costly. If you do a review of all department budgets in the city, I guarantee you, within the health insurance account or in the miscellaneous department line items, you'd find the $300,000 there to take out of there because it's not going to get spent. It's going to become next year's free cash. So why don't you take it out of there and leave OPEB alone? It's so easy to raid an account that isn't going to hit us right now. But believe me, when it hits us, everyone will be wishing we'd started putting money into this account. So this is really bad practice. Thank you.
Thank you to the mayor. Madam Mayor, what would this leave us in that account if we take the $300,000 out of that?
My understanding is that we have about $575,000. It would leave us about $275,000.
Thank you. Councilor Caddy.
I just want to say that we're very, very close to losing a grant that we've obtained. Mr. Casassa, is it $400,000, that grant that we got?
The grant was $500,000 and there's a little over $400,000 left in the balance.
And I agree with Councilor De Natale. However, because time is so short, this would be money well spent and hopefully we can put that money back into OPEB and make an opportunity. But I'm just afraid that if we don't pass this tonight, we're going to lose that large grant and we're still going to have the responsibility of tearing that building down. And then also, if Mr. Casassa could back me up on this one, we spend $30,000 a year on a system to keep the oil from draining into the Nashua River. We just appropriated that last week. If we do not pass this tonight and that building doesn't come down, we're going to be continuing to pay that $30,000 a year, plus all the fines that the DEP will make us, will require us to spend. So this is very important, very, very important.
Councilor, I agree that it's important, and I spoke at the committee meeting last week, that if this had been done five years ago, it would have been done for half the amount that it's going to cost us now, and that is a shame. I'd like to go back to the mayor for one other question. In the budget that you're proposing for next year, Madam Mayor, is there a line item for the reserve for other post-employment benefits? Is anything in that line item?
That line item right now is zero.
Thank you. Councilor Caddy.
Joseph.
I'm Joseph. Councilor Caddy just finished.
I just, I guess I, the only reason that I'm upset that we have to do this under suspension of the rules is I really wish we had time to discuss this. Because I really think that if we were to look at the stabilization fund, which that's what it's there for, if you have a one-time occurrence or something like that, there's other, you know, there might be other money in different accounts in it, but we're rushing this through. Hopefully, if we send this through at the $300,000, we can have another petition that says $300,000 goes from other accounts to the OPEB to backplace this money before the end of the year. Because I really would like to, that we should have more discussion where this money comes from other than OPEB. But right now, guns to the head and we got to do it. So I'm going to vote for it, but I really would like to see how by the end of the year, we're going to, we could backfill this money back into the OPEB.
So Bean.
I just want to reiterate what Councilor De Natale and Councilor Joseph both said. I mean, you know, we're at the last minute here, you know, now we're told that we're jeopardy of losing, you know, a grant money of umpteen dollars, but, you know, again, it's, it should have been, six months ago, we'd be dealing this and that. I hate to do this at the last minute. Again, I always hate to do things under the gun at a meeting and not a committee meeting. It's bad practice for us to do that. Never mind bad practice by taking money out of OPEB, which we've been fighting to put money in, and now to take it out of that when there might be other opportunities, as Councilor De Natale said, if you took a closer look at the budget, we're coming to the, you know, end of the year, there must be some accounts there other than OPEB. I just think it sends a bad message that, you know, we're talking for years about OPEB and our responsibility to fund it, and now we're raiding it. I have a hard time with that. I think it's bad practice. But again, it may be one of these ones where you have to hold our nose because of the fact that it was delayed for whatever reason, and now we're at the last minute, you know, guns to the head that we have to do something or we're going to lose $400,000. It's not a good position I like being in. I hope we're not in this position ever again. We should be told well in advance and be able to deal with these things ahead of time.
Councilor Kuschmerich.
Last week at Finance, we asked, you know, what was the minimum, the minimum deposit you can make in OPEB contribution for each year? And I believe he said 250. So by 275, that puts us dangerously close to the minimum contribution of being able to put towards OPEB in general. So I think Council Joseph's point is a good one in that, you know, if this is what we're dipping into now, I hope that there is a plan between now and fiscal year end to be able to increase our contribution. So it's not, you know, the minimum 250 or just a hair over at 275 of, you know, when we looked at half a million dollars plus, you know, six months ago, even then, we were saying, that's great that we're finally funding it, but it's still not enough. So if $500,000 or $600,000 then wasn't enough, we're certainly not getting any closer by taking $300,000 away. And I think that speaks to another point that Council Bean brought up, which is, I feel like a broken record here, but every, every month, I feel like I'm talking about long-term strategic interests and capital assets. We're not planning out, you know, we just don't have enough of a grasp in this city on our capital assets and the direction that we're going in terms of our buildings and our grounds and our facilities, and they end up becoming long-term liabilities and they end up paying more in the long run if we had just, you know, addressed it when it first came to a head. You know, I know we have a Capital Improvement Commission. I know they do, you know, a lot of hard work each and every year to put items in front of us, but I think we need to take a closer look at what we're doing and how we're strategizing moving forward. Thank you.
Councilor De Natale.
We have a stabilization account for a reason. Why don't we use it? Is it because this city's been so poorly managed financially for 35 years that we're afraid to touch it? This is what you would use it for, not raid an unfunded liability account that's at $200 million. I'm telling you, I hope the grandchildren of, from this point, the grandkids that are going to be paying for this in 40 years, I hope we get thank you cards from them because that's what's going to happen. Our sister city, I hate to keep comparing us to them, but they do something right. They've got millions stashed away towards this. We've got zip, okay? I'm looking at the status E right now. At the end of fiscal year 14, we had $325,000 left in the health insurance account. In 2013, we had $425,000 left in the account. This year, we're running almost at $475,000 in that account. But we're going to raid OPEB. You go through every budget line item in here and you'll find $300,000 in a second. This is the easy decision. Just take it out of an account that we don't have to worry about right now. But again, what is stabilization for? We talk about how important it is, but we don't want to use it. Do we, are we all afraid that if we use it, we're going to, we're going to get a slap on the wrist from our bond rating agencies? We're not using it for contracts. We're not using it for recurring expenses. We're using it for an emergency expenditure because we dropped the ball seven years ago or whenever we dropped the ball. The money is there, just not from here. I can't believe this didn't come out of stabilization. I can't believe this didn't come out of anywhere else. Just look at the prior history reports. That's all I'm asking. It is there. This is the last thing we should do. And it's comforting to know that the next budget doesn't have anything in it. We read an article in the paper about how everything's rosy this year because the revenues are up. Well, the revenues are up because we taxed people to the max again. And instead of taking that money we collected over expenses, we're going to spend it on things other than OPEB and stabilization. Great plan. Thank you.
Councilor Beazall.
Council President Hay, I have a question for Mr. Casassa.
Sure, I could.
So Larry, when did we know about this? I guess, how long has this project been going on? And when did you know that this was taking place, that we needed these funds?
Well, the grant was given to us more than a year ago, and the process of getting the asbestos assessment work done and the other assessment work at the site, including the assessment of the bridge, took a considerable amount of time. We then had to put that together in a package to put the project out to bid, and that occurred about a month ago, a little bit more than a month ago. The bid open was held on April 3rd, and at that point, we really did not know what to expect. It was a highly competitive process. We had over 20 firms go through that building two days after it was held open. We were hopeful for a lower bid than the ones that we received, but the one, the bid that we did receive was $200,000 less than the next low bid. So it wasn't until the time that we realized what the actual cost for that building would be that we could determine how much, if any, additional funding would be needed to be able to tear the building down.
Okay, thank you. And I mean, just a comment, I know that, reading the article in the paper the other day, it talked about the revenues from Great Wolf being over $600,000, and that was going into this year's budget. I know earlier, there was a petition put in last year to actually use that funds to go into this account, and I guess we were kind of told that really wasn't, well, we really shouldn't, or we didn't have the authority to do that. There is funds out there that can go into this account. Last year, I know we had new growth of $1 million. We were only budgeted for $500,000. So instead of saying, okay, we only budgeted for 500, we've got new growth for a million, we're going to take that $500,000 and put it somewhere else, we spent it. Every year, we spend more and more and more, and every year, the budget grows, and every year, we have to fund it the following year. At some point, we need to have somebody look at all these accounts and say, what is it that we can do to say, we're going to cap new growth at $500,000, going into the budget. The rest of it is going to go into another account. We have to, at some point, stop just spending every single thing that we get into the, into the city. Every dime we collect, we spend it. At some point, that's got to stop. Thank you.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt 08015. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Hands up, please.
Four in opposition.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public hearing? All have been heard. We move to the report on the Committee on Records. Councilor Green.
Yes, I'd like to report that the minutes from the last council meeting are proper and in order.
Would the committee's report be accepted?
Second. Motion, a second, that the Committee on Records' report be accepted. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. Appointments Committee. Councilor Bean.
President, the Appointments Committee met tonight with all members present. We had one new appointment, Student Police Officer for the Pittsburgh Police Department, Mr. Lucas Bahania. That was approved unanimously by the members of the committee. We also had two reappointments, one to the Board of Park Commissioners, Mr. James McGrath, 83 Charles Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. Term expires April 1st, 2020. His appoint, his reappointment was approved unanimously. We also had a Counsel on Aging, Mr. William Walsh, 50 Prospect Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. Term expires January 1st, 2017. Again, that was passed unanimously by the committee.
Motion to approve the Appointments Committee report.
Second. A motion, a second, to approve the Appointments Committee report. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. Councilors, we now have the swearing-in of the new police officer. Madam Clerk?
Please. Move a little way, yeah.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me to take a note. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
But I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a student police officer.
As a student police officer.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Go lefty, sir.
Would you like to, would you like to take some pictures?
Sure.
Congratulations.
I can be safe.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll be safe.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to, would you like to take some pictures?
Sure.
Congratulations.
I can be safe.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll be safe.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take a picture.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Take a picture.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll be safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a picture.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Take a picture.
Thank you.
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 I have communications from her honor, the mayor. First one is a fiscal year 2016 draft budget for review letter, councilors. Everybody get this as part of the council packet. We'll place it on file in the clerk's office. Next is, Dear Honorable Councilors, effective April 21st, 2015, I hereby promote the following members of the Pittsburgh Police Department with the succeeding ranks. Acting Lieutenant Timothy M. McDermott to the rank of permanent lieutenant. Acting Sergeant Scott S. Gabriel to the rank of permanent sergeant. Sergeant Jeffrey J. Howe to the rank of acting lieutenant. Officer Ryan C. Keenan to the rank of acting sergeant. And the clerk will swear in permanent lieutenant McDermott and permanent sergeant Scott Gabriel. So come forward with the chief, please. You got something else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on up. Once again, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to bring these two new appointments, supervisory appointments to you. Both these officers have been working in acting positions for the past couple of months. First of all, Timmy McDermott, he's been employed by the Pittsburgh Police Department since 1996. Tim was appointed a police sergeant in 2003, and during his tenure as a police sergeant, Tim has held the rank of acting lieutenant twice. Lieutenant McDermott recently was the top scorer on the state mass civil service test for lieutenant. Lieutenant McDermott will be assigned to the first, second relief, day shift as a shift commander. Tim is a very valuable member of our police department, and he's, we're excited to have him as part of our command staff. Second, Scott Gabriel. Scott has been employed with the City of Pittsburgh Police Department since 2003. Scott has taken the last two promotional exams for a sergeant, and I'm proud to say he's taught both of them. This last year, I had the opportunity to study with Scott, preparing for promotional exams, and it was a pleasure studying with him. He's going to be a fine addition to our command staff at the police department. So I'm excited. We're building a new command staff at the police department, and these two gentlemen are going to be a very important part of it. So thank you, both of you. Thank you, councilors.
Madam Clerk? Lieutenant?
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent lieutenant.
As a permanent lieutenant.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
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 Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent lieutenant.
As a permanent lieutenant.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
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 Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent sergeant.
As a permanent sergeant.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on with communications from the mayor. Dear Honorable Councilors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation, Mr. Mark Jackson of 535 South Street, Unit 5-4, Pittsburgh, Mass., is a member of the Pittsburgh Housing Authority for a term to expire on January 1st, 2017. Mr. Jackson will be filling the position vacated by Mr. Joseph Malanson earlier this year. As of today, I'm appointing Mr. Jackson as an interim member of the Pittsburgh Housing Authority until the confirmation is voted upon by the City Council. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Communications and reports from other department heads. Dear President Hay, I'm writing to you with respect to the above- referenced petition whereby the council approved the petition of Carlos Perez to purchase parcel of land about 302 Kimball Street. A short time after this petition was approved, the City Council approved Order 220-14 whereby Dakota City, Pittsburgh, was amended to allow for a side yard sales program. It has been suggested to me by the treasurer and the assistant city solicitor that rather than engaging in the formal process of selling the property to Mr. Perez under Petition 10414, that this petition be rescinded and that the property in question be disposed of according to the new side yard sales program. It is my opinion that it is not necessary to rescind or revoke petition 210414, but that this petition may stand in abstinence while the side yard sales committee disposes of the property under that program. Let me know if you have any questions regarding this. Sincerely, John B. Barrett, City Solicitor.
Moving forward to the agenda. 07915, Annual Report of the Pittsburgh Public Library for the Fiscal Year 2014.
Move the reading be waived and placed on file in the City Clerk's office.
Second. We have a motion, a second, that the, about reading be waived and the report be placed on file in the City Clerk's office. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. Finance Committee. Councilor De Natale.
President, Finance met last Tuesday, April 14th, and took up the following. 5515, An Order Transfer $1,470 From Within Treasurer Personal Services. That was adopted. 5615, Transfer $12,187 From Within Police Personal Services. That was adopted.
But staging for the Ward 6 cleanup is at IC Credit Union on Saturday. And Monday, we have the Ward 6 meeting at 6 o'clock at St. Bernard's Elementary School with several guests being in attendance.
Counselor Green.
Yes, I'd like to make the announcement that Ward 1 cleanup, the location has been decided, and that will be at the Rollstone Laurel Street School is where we'll meet on Saturday, May 9.
Counselor Motion.
Ward 2A and 2B cleanup would be May 2nd. We're asked to clean the sidewalks and put it in the street. We're asked not to put the sand and piles. They will be taking the sweep, sweep sweepers in May 4th through the 14th in our wards. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to mention about an event that's coming up on May the 11th at 6:30, Oak Hill Country Club. Paul Garvin, very active in the community, has won this year's Balder Award, and he will be receiving it on that night. And if anybody would like to go, I have tickets for that event. Thank you.
Counselor Kuchmarek.
On Saturday, May 30th, Ward 4 and 5 will hold their respective cleanups. The locations are to be determined in the near future. Thank you.
Motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, Counselors.[1375.86]